So we're going to give you opportunity to come to the lectern and speak. We'd like for you to give us your name and address for the record, please. We do have a three-minute time limit on speakers. So I will ask Fanchin to monitor that for me, please. And that being said, we're going to move into our consent agenda. If we have any discussion, corrections, errors, omissions. If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Excuse me, I move to approve the minutes of the consent agenda, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, question carries. Let's go to our public hearings. First item will be item four A. And I believe, Diane, are you going to be? This is going to be Bill?
She'll do four B.
She'll be doing four B? Well, what if I wanted her to do four A, is that okay?
It's your meeting, Mr. Chairman.
All right, go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, this is case number four A. Receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of the Old Madonna Edition located between East Hall Street and Munson Street. Case number 2021-006 RP. So here's the subject property outlined in yellow. That's Munson to the north and East Hall to the south. And here's the zoning of the subject property. It is multifamily one. The developer does have intentions of constructing single-family detached dwelling units, even though you have multifamily zoning, and that is permitted in this zoning district. I'll note that this property is also within the residential infill overlay. Here's a cutout from the proposed plat. The applicant is taking an existing fourteen lots. I know this is a little difficult to read, so I'm going to back up here. They're taking these fourteen lots and combining them into a total of twelve, just to get a little bit more width on all the lots. After the replat is approved, the applicant will be moving forward with the installation of public facilities such as city sewer in the alley to service the new lots. Once the sewer is installed, then the plat may be filed with the county, assuming approval of today's plat. So the plat meets all the zoning requirements and subdivision standards, and we have a recommendation of approval from city staff, and they'll remind that this is a public hearing.
Okay? Thank you, sir. Any questions of staff? All right. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request?
Ashley Grayville, I'm with Ameritex Homes.
Okay.
Bill covered it pretty well. We would like to get started as soon as the replat is approved and the sewer is installed. We are working with the public utilities to make sure that we are doing it the most efficiently, as well as running the electrical through the alley as well.
Okay, any questions in the speaker? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat.
A second. I have a motion with a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Item four B.
Thank you, item four B. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to rezone approximately 23.82 acres located in the northwest corridor of West Crawford Street and US Highway 75 from a commercial zoning to a planned development zoning district, case number 2021-144 PD. This is the subject property highlighted in yellow, with US 75 to the east and West Crawford to the south, Ansley Lane to the west. Current zoning is commercial. This property does fall within the highway overlay district and is adjacent to the native greenbelt. The applicant is requesting a rezone to the planned development district for a development of a new auto dealership. They are also asking within the PD to allow for development standards that are currently prohibited within the highway overlay district. As you can see in this elevation, they are wanting to use aluminum clad panel system for the facade of their new auto dealership. They are also wanting to utilize a black coated chain link fencing atop a retaining wall for safety and security purposes along the greenbelt and to the northern part of their property. The property or the development will be developed into two phases. One, phase one will be the new auto dealership, with phase two consisting of a collision repair center and a building for detailing and make ready for delivery of vehicles. Applicant is here for any questions, and staff does support this rezone.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Any questions of staff? Okay. Applicant is here? There's three applicants. Can I have just one?
Good morning.
Mr. Freeman.
Mr. Freeman, yes. The one with the nice printing. You just told me that a few minutes ago.
That's it.
That's great. We're here to fill any questions that you might have.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chuck Freeman, 1150 East Kennedale Parkway, Kennedale, Texas. Any questions that you might have on the project, we're here to answer.
Okay. Any questions for our speaker?
I've got just one. I know that the greenbelt is very important to some residents in that area. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, the greenbelt, we're considering it to be sacred, so we're not touching it at all. The only thing that we're doing is we're, because of grading situations on the west side of the property, we're putting a retaining wall up there, hence the requirement for chain link fence, vinyl coated chain link fence. But the greenbelt, we are not touching or disturbing.
Thank you.
Ms. Freeman, you architect a record, is that your?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions in speaker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You betcha. Eric?
I just wanted everyone to know that I'm here to answer any questions you might have. The greenbelt is actually incredibly important to me, too. It's, I grew up actually in the neighborhood that's on the other side of that greenbelt, so it's, there's a lot of nostalgia there for me. Not only do I want to be a great neighbor to that neighborhood, but I want to help bring light to it and help brighten the area with what we're developing. Is, I hope to be the pride of Dennison and make it as beautiful as it can possibly be.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Mitch? Mitch, I'll probably ruin your last name, but I'll say his shot is, is it Panzik?
Close enough.
All right.
Mitch Honzick, 3904 West Sixth Street, Fort Worth, Texas. I'll be the general contractor on the project, so if you have any constructibility questions, I'm here to answer those, and obviously I support this project.
All right, any questions?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And then, is it Leah Turner?
Yes.
Do you want to come forward?
Oh, wow, yes, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got you, that's four C, I'm sorry. Sorry. My bad. My bad. Anybody else here on four B? Anybody else here on four B? Okay. Um. You know, we had this discussion a couple of months ago about whether or not we wanted automobile dealerships along the highway. I made the statement that architecturally, we would not be disappointed with any new development that has, that would, you know, as far as an auto dealership that would be coming to the highway, we would not be disappointed. I think what we just saw proves that point. In respect to the metal that they're asking for the variance on, or the PD, so we can use that, that is a chosen material now for a lot of commercial, and it is a very expensive, very expensive material to be used. And it's very popular, not just with automobile dealerships, as you've probably seen, but this general commercial construction. So that being said, I'm totally happy with what I'm seeing. And as we said in our earlier discussions, Eric and Classic have been good neighbors and good community supporters. So I'm personally happy to see this project to get underway. Anybody else anything you want to add, any discussion or any questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the subject property being rezoned to a planned development zoning district for the development of a new auto dealership.
Second.
I have a motion with a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, out, and passes. Item four C, thank you, gentlemen.
This is item four C. Receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to rezone approximately 160 acres from the agricultural zoning district to a planned development overlay district for retail, townhomes, single-family, multifamily uses, I'm sorry, uses, located east of US 75 and north of Randell Drive. Case number 145 PD. So here's the subject property outlined in yellow. That's US 75 to the north, 91 to the east, and Randell to the south. And that's, it's a little hard to see in this aerial, however, the new high school is located to the east, just for additional reference points. Here's the zoning of the area. It's predominantly zoned agricultural, with some light industrial uses to the south and a sprinkling of commercial or retail along 91. And that planned development is the high school. So here's the proposed concept plan. This is what the developer is wishing to move forward with. So you can see you have retail on that corner of 91 and US 75. One of the things that staff was really happy to see is the developer is really receptive to feedback on the actual layout of the plan. So here you can see you have multifamily directly adjacent at US 75. That was a direct request from staff. And then the other thing on here, which I think is noteworthy in addition to an amenity center as well, is the true mix of smaller and larger lots. So those darker lots there are going to be your, those orange lots are 50 by 115, and those yellow lots are 60 by 115 feet deep. So those different lot sizes are mixed in throughout the phases and within each phase. And at the very bottom of the development, you have some townhomes with access off of Randell Drive, in addition to about seven and a half acres of parkland dedication on the, I guess that's the western end of the development, with some trail connectivity through the middle. So city staff, you know, we're recommending approval of the project. As a recap, the proposed planned development is a rezone from agricultural zoning district to a PD for retail, townhomes, single-family, and multifamily uses. And we're present for any questions you might have, and so is the applicant.
Bill, what's the zoning south of Randell Drive?
That's going to be light industrial.
That's what I was thinking, okay.
And if you keep going further south down Juanita, it's additional industrial with some ag.
Okay, any questions of staff, guys?
Just one. We've talked before about the idea that planned developments and possibility of sidewalks. Will sidewalks be incorporated?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions of staff? Okay. Is the applicant here?
Hi, thank you, my name is Ashley Williams. I live at 3907 Wichita Trail in Flower Mound, Texas. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and I'm the engineer. The applicant's here as well, but we are happy to answer any questions. Mr. Medina did a phenomenal job of explaining the project, and we've really enjoyed our time working with the city of Dennison and collaborating and figuring out what's the best use for this space that's going to work well for us as well as you guys.
Okay, any questions?
All right, thank you.
Does the applicant want to speak, or you're speaking on his behalf?
Sure.
Okay.
My name is Spiro Trjeski. I live at 111 Lilly Field Drive in Allen, Texas. I am the owner and applicant. I would like to say that based on our conceptual design, we've had a lot of input from the local community, the city, and we are very proud with our final design, and I think that this would be a great addition to the smart growth of Dennison and the path that Dennison has taken. I do believe that this will be one of the premier home communities that would promote homeownership and living in the city of Dennison, and with the proximity of the schools and the lakes and the other parks and other things that we have as amenities in this project, we're very proud to be a part of it. And any questions anyone might have, I'm willing to answer.
What, what's going to put in the amenity center? Is that going to be like a community pool?
Yes, that will have a community pool. It will have a gym facility. It will have a gathering hall type facility that would be available for functions for the community itself. There will also be a lot of trails and parkland, green space dedication that will be also an amenity to the community. Streetlights, sidewalks, all of the infrastructure, including fiber, coming into the property. But that will be, the center point of the project would be the amenity center.
Have you discussed the sale of the lots to a builder at this point?
We have several builders that have been interested in coming in to the project. We have not decided on a builder as of yet. We have.
Are these volume builders?
Some are. We have turned down some of the volume builders because they intended to build rental communities, and it's not what we envisioned for this project.
Right.
That's one of the reasons that we went with a little bigger lot, is to kind of promote homeownership instead of rental communities. And because it does have a multifamily component, there is a home for that. There is also a townhome component. So this is designed to attract a wide age group and an affordable group.
You answered one of my questions, and my other one is, what is the price range you're kind of looking at for the single family?
The single family, we're thinking should be somewhere around 300 plus. And that would be a starting point.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Turner? We finally get to.
Okay, so I've never done this before. I'm kind of nervous to speak in front of people. We live. We live right here. So that kind of bigger lot is ours right here. I'm so excited after hearing you guys, because I wasn't sure what they were going to put there. So you answered most of my questions, thank you. But I do have a question. I don't, so this is the high school ag barn, so I have concerns for these kids, and of course, the kids I gave birth to. This road right here, I don't know when's the last time you guys drove down the road, but it's like an ongoing safety hazard. There's like potholes bigger than my expedition. And I just didn't know, like, during the construction, if it's going to tear that road up anymore and be cleared up and, just like if anything's going to happen right there with this new development.
It'll be doubtful that anything in that right of way will be disturbed. The property line in is where the construction will occur. I doubt there's going to be any, you know, infrastructure, water, sewer lines in that area that will be.
They actually have already come out to flag for the sewer line, they'll be.
I think probably everything's going to be internal. I'm just guessing that that's the way it'll be. So I don't think that that's Randall Road, I think, isn't it? I don't think there will be anything done to it.
Any changes to it? All right, that's a different conversation for a different day then. They answered most of my questions, thank you very much.
And I would be more concerned about that person that has to live next to that ag barn.
Yeah, that's a whole difference.
That man should have been a park lot.
Fortunately, we live upwind from the ag barn, so we're okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Yes, sir?
I have just a couple of questions.
Sure. Give us your name and address for the record, please. Did you fill out speaker's card?
No, I did not.
All right, when, before you leave, would you fill it out?
Sure.
With Fanchin and that, we will have it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
My name is Logan Bartley. I live at 3627 North State Highway 91. So I'm right on the, where it abuts next to the proposed development. I'm glad to hear that it's not going to be an apartment rising right by my backyard, so. This does look a lot better than, I'm glad it's going to be single homes, not stuff like that. So they answered a lot of my questions. A few questions I do have on the part that's still in black and white. What are they zoned just to the right, like where my house is and a few others? Yeah, like there's multicolors, like dark green, there's some purple colors.
Purple's light industrial.
Okay.
Yes, all that light purple is light industrial, and the, those darker purples, those deeper colors, those are more of your commercial and retail type uses.
But the part that's still in green is currently agriculture? Like even where my house is, it's still agriculture?
Yeah, if it's got a green color on it, that's ag.
Okay. And that, none of those are going to be affected in the change? Okay. All right, that's a lot of questions they have.
Thank you, Logan.
Do you have a card?
Uh, she'll have one. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just clarify something. On Randell Drive, the Public Works Director, my understanding is that she's going to require a traffic impact analysis with the, whenever we start plating and civils are under design and have been submitted. That traffic impact analysis may show that improvements to Randell Drive may be.
Necessary.
Yeah, may be necessary. My assumption is that they would be, that there might be an upgrade to Randell, but without that analysis, it's difficult to make that determination right now.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion among the commissioners?
Can I ask more of a question? I'm so sorry.
Well.
Oh, sorry.
Technically, I just closed the public hearing.
Oh, you did, okay, I'm sorry.
Can I fill the question? Bill?
I'm sorry?
Can I fill the question, even though I've closed the public hearing?
I'm so sorry.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, I can fill the question.
I'm in here.
And we can always meet after the meeting as well to answer your questions.
I will do after?
Absolutely.
Just curious about timelines, it's really dangerous, that road is really dangerous. So I just have a lot of concern for it.
If you would, yeah, just get Bill after the meeting. That way I don't get in trouble. All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
I do have a question for Bill. I don't know if you know that. Is there going to be a traffic signal put in at the 91? Do you know where?
So that traffic.
Across from where the entrance to the high school and so forth?
Yeah, that traffic impact analysis will show that, if one's warranted. It is a textod right of way, so we'll have to coordinate with textod and the developer to make sure that whatever is needed is put there.
That's terrible.
But my guess is, yeah.
I would figure so.
All right.
Good, it's on. All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
I move to recommend of the project, subject property being rezoned to a planned development overlay district for retail, townhomes, single-family, and multifamily use. Second.
I have a motion with a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item four D.
Item four D. Receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, make a recommendation on a request to rezone approximately 39 acres from the SF 75 district to commercial zoning district, and, I'm sorry, and commercial zoning district to a planned development overlay for retail and townhomes, multifamily uses. This is located west of the intersection of Woodlawn Boulevard and West Coffin Street. Here's the subject property outlined in yellow. As mentioned, that's Coffin that kind of runs east to west into the property. The applicant has intentions of changing that name. And then you have Woodlawn, which turns into Armstrong, running north to south. Now to the east, you can see that outline of a railroad bed. That's actually the future phase of Katy Trail. Or what will be Katy Trail, rather. Here's the zoning of the property, as I mentioned, it's zone SF 75, and there are some commercial zoning districts along the frontage road, in this case, Austin and Woodlawn, I'm sorry, Armstrong and Woodlawn. Here's the concept plan of the property, or the Rose PD. As with the last case, we do have an amenity center. Here you're showing a trailhead and connectivity with some parking into the future Katy Trail, which the developer has proposed. This project compared to the last one is a lot more heavy on the multifamily side. As you can see, you have, let's see, about a 16 and a half acre tract of multifamily uses on the northern balance of the property, with some open space and a dog park, in addition to some supplemental trail connectivity to Katy Trail. On the bottom half of the proposed development, you're going to have additional townhomes, and then retail adjacent to Woodlawn. So with that, Mr. Chairman, you have a recommendation of approval from city staff, and the applicant is also here.
Okay. Any questions of staff? All right, applicant, would like to come forward.
Hi, again, Ashley Williams. Address is 3907 Wichita Trail, Flower Mound, Texas. Again, similar to our last project that we just discussed as well, we've been working with staff extensively on this one to, you know, facilitate an opportunity for the community that could offer multifamily townhomes and, you know, some mixed-use development. We feel like the access and, or the accessibility to Katy Trail and what we could do with that in this area, along with the frontage of the commercial along Woodlawn, it really facilitates the multifamily and the townhome use. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions?
Can you describe the amenity center, excuse me, center?
Okay.
Swimming pool and?
Yes, it will, it will have a swimming pool, you know, and a covered pavilion area, outdoor restrooms, and we've even looked at, you know, in the plan of how are we going to interconnect that to Katy Trail and make it, you know, where the residents here not only, you know, use the pool, but use the other amenities as well.
That's quite a wooded area. Would you be able to retain any of the trees that are existing now within the development?
Whenever we get in our next step and within, like, you know, started on the engineering, we'll be able to do our full topo, the tree inventories. If there's ability to save trees, I would definitely promote that and want to. A lot of times, depending on what that topography looks like, what is, you know, our infrastructure that we're having to put in, and, you know, the adjacency to the floodplain as well, are all considerations that are going to help us determine if we can.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any discussion among the chairs or the commissioners?
I'm just pleased to see that incorporating the Katy Trail in the development with the walkways and everything involved.
Now, this is a, this is a real cool project, I think this is going to be awesome. Okay. Well, seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the subject property being rezoned to planned development overlay district for retail, townhome, and multiple family uses. I'll second.
I have a motion with a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, that does it for public hearing items. Number five, staff updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have any staff updates about the department. I would like to inform the PNC Commission that I have accepted another position with another city, and my last meeting will be the first of December. And I've enjoyed my time with all of you, and I've learned a lot, and it's been a real treat working with all of you. And it was very difficult writing my letter of resignation. It was bittersweet, and I hope to one day come back to the city as well and serve our citizens in a higher capacity.
We have vetoed that, so thanks for staying.
We didn't vote.
I just want to tell you, I made a phone call to that city this morning, and you're not going to that city.
We'll miss you, Bill, so thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you for all your.
You know, let me just say this about Bill. Bill was kind of thrown into the fire. When Bill came to Dennison, he came to the Parks Department, and we had a need in the planning department, and they just brought him in there and just threw him to the wolves. And he got latched. And he got lashed up a little bit, but he survived, and I think you've done a good job, Bill. I really did. We appreciate you.
We'll miss you.
And, and now we're throwing Diane in the fire.
Yep.
And so she's, she's about to start taking your abuse, so. All right, anything else?
That wasn't a fun update.
It was not. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Good.
Okay, well, thank all of you for being here this morning. We appreciate you coming out, especially our citizens and your input. That's important to us, and it, it helps us when we're making decisions about the future of this city. And with that being said, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We stand adjourned at 10:33 AM.